Come to order, welcome to our report session. I think we've got a new and improved gavel. That sounds like a rifle shot. Before we get started, I wanted to recognize two Riverdale students who are here for a class. We've got Lauren Hall and Brenna Wolfing. Hi ladies. Welcome. I'm glad to see that they're-
They've been late to school several times and this is punched.
I think they're hoping that we'll ooze some wisdom if they're not going there.
We might ooze, but I'm not sure it'll be wisdom.
What classes are you coming for? Oh wow.
Okay, good, cool. Well, we're glad to have them. Okay, questions on the agenda? On the concerned agenda? Okay, number six, Don, are we gonna do that tomorrow or-
We are.
Okay.
Thursday evening, the principal should be here.
Seven, we'll obviously do tomorrow. Eight, is that also tomorrow, Gary?
Yes.
And we have some photos of Stewart's Creek. I think I saw some online, but I think I appreciate seeing the photos. Number nine.
Number nine, this is a textbook adoption for a book not on the state list. Form AD 5196, local adoption of textbooks not on contract. The instruction department's requesting approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules, regulations, and minimum standards for which no textbook could be included in the official list of textbooks under section 1.02 program selection. And the recommended approval is approval of those. It's taken off. A recommended approval motion for Rutherford County to request approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules, regulations, and minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under section 102 program selection. The books to be adopted for the next six years are AP books, ours tonight, AP Latin, which is Virgil's, and Caesar is the second one under AP Latin, and then AP French. Again, Imaginets is the second book, and that would be the recommendation.
Okay, discussion on that one?
I just have a question about Latin classes. All high schools have Latin?
They still do to my knowledge, yes. I'm not positive that it will, I might have to recheck for you later. Giddy hard to get Latin teachers out there, I'll say that.
Well, that was-
Very difficult.
That was a difficult thing years ago. I just wondered if we were able to do that at all the hospitals.
At this time, we have, to my knowledge, we're maybe not.
Grant?
We're gonna ask probably similar things, making a comeback, because, you know, for years, there is a downward, downward swing.
You know, initially, it was, it's a great course, certainly in language, but initially, it was required for certain college pathways and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure where that stands on some of that, but lots of people in pre-doctor, medical doctor programs, other things like that, or some of the language, right? It is? It is?
But it was really a down book to use.
It's, our biggest would be Spanish and French, and probably then German, and maybe Latin.
Erin?
The state keeps a textbook committee that reviews these, this recommendation. Is it coming from some area of our system that's reviewed this, or is it coming from a faculty member?
A number of our faculty will get together with our person in instruction to review this book before the recommendation. There's certain books typically in some of these language books or AP, something like that, and those in CTE, the State Textbook Commission does cover the basic four areas and major areas, but when you're off into some of these other areas, they'll always make a state list from which we can choose. A lot of times, a driving force behind it, because they go to AP training, and we do send teachers to AP training. AP training is not required to teach the course, but Rutherford County, historically, Mr. Sandman's been very good to instruction, and we have been sending our teachers to AP training, so very fortunate that ours do that. And sometimes, they'll come back and see, when they're meeting with everyone else in those trainings, this is really a good book. Some of the people from AP training will say, this is ones that worked in a lot of systems. So very often, the initial, take a look at the book, comes from the AP training.
Recommendation then is coming from instruction and your office as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other discussion? Number ten.
This is facilities. Deductive change order for a home opittered campus school. In accordance with the capital improvement agreement between Middle Tennessee State University and Rutherford County Board of Education concerning home opittered campus schools, signed and dated by Mr. Harry Gill on November 26, 2006, and amendment one to that agreement, signed September 13, 2007, the work has been completed by Hawke Mechanical on behalf of Rutherford County Schools. His final phase of the project was completed ahead of schedule and under our contract amount. The deductive change order number two to Hawke Mechanical is in the amount of $19,550. This deduct will make the final contract amount for Phase Two $452,950 and completes our contractual construction obligation to MTSU. Recommended approval, a motion to approve a deductive change order in the amount of $19,550 to Hawke Mechanical for the completion of home opittered campus school renovations, making the final contract amount $452,950.
And I met with Dr. McPhee on Monday, and he commented, his people had been out and looked at the school himself, and they were reporting to him that they also felt that everything was complete, very appreciative, impressed with the changes that we made.
Been like a long journey. I'd just come on the board, and that came across our desk, and that was tough.
Well, school looks great, and it's performing well, so I think we did the right thing. But you're right, Wayne, it's been a long, expensive journey for us, but it's had a happy ending.
I told Mr. Clardy, the cobs and the steps at the front this year, what they completed, really did make it look nice as you're approaching the building.
Other discussion? Okay, B.
Outdoor walking tracks at David Urie Elementary School and Cedar Grove Elementary. As reported, Ms. Jenna Stitzel, at an August 9, 2012, regular school board meeting, she has received grants for construction of impervious concrete walking tracks at some of our schools this school year. Two such benefactors are David Urie Elementary School and Cedar Grove Elementary School. A 200-meter track will be constructed at these schools with the help of the Segal Foundation and Middle Tennessee State Universities at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. The engineering and construction department will inspect the tracks during construction. And the motion is to approve construction of a 200-meter walking track of pervious concrete at David Urie Elementary School and Cedar Grove Elementary School at no cost to the board.
Discussion. C.
C is Oakland High School baseball field improvements. Principal Bill Spurlock has requested permission to make the following improvements to Oakland High School baseball facilities. A 40-foot-long by three-feet-high brick wall with protective netting, a nine-foot-wide concrete pad fencing along the visitors' perimeter of the field, and construction of a permanent ticket booth at the entrance to the facility. The suggested improvements will minimize current drainage issues and not create a Title IX or gender equity issue. The improvements will be funded by the Oakland High School Baseball Booster Club and individual donations with no cost to the board. Recommend approval, motion to approve improvements to Oakland High School baseball facilities as presented at no cost to the board.
Discussion.
One of the things that slipped by was this correct some drainage problems that had been there for some time. Mr. Clardy did take a look at that. That may be something that you're interested in.
What happened with it? I forgot now what school it was. Was it Oakland Middle, where we had the parent come, and was it Oakland Middle?
The ball was going over into the yards and all like that. Mr. Clardy did go out and take a look at that.
Do you mind stepping up? If it's okay.
We went over and fenced off that berm area, and so there's no traffic through there now, the public not impacting that area. We also put a net up over the batting area to keep the ball from going across into that area. And then on the other end, we put up some fencing and different things to keep the traffic from coming through. The, one of the things was that there were some trees, were some trees that were cut down on one end, but it wasn't done by us, it was done by homeowner down there. And the guy that was trying to sell his house, that said it was a problem, had since sold his house and relocated.
Well, it sounds like we're pretty responsive though, so.
Language check.
And he sold his house, so. And he didn't send his daughter the lawyer after.
Well-
Well, she wouldn't have sent just her, they had a team.
Okay, D.
Naming of Segal High School football stadium. Mr. Jason Bridgeman submitted a request to name the Segal High School football stadium in honor of the former principal, Mr. Ken Nolan. Mr. Ken Nolan retired from Rutherford County Schools after being in education for 39 years. During his tenure as principal of Segal High School, he promoted a safe and successful environment while fostering collaboration among faculty. Mr. Nolan has been an average supporter of student athletics and was an integral part of the construction of football facilities at Oakland High School and Segal High School. The motion is to name the Segal High School football stadium the Ken Nolan Stadium.
Discussion.
Can I tell some amusing stories before we vote?
You sure can.
He was a kicker.
I got a bit of that.
I bet you have. I was talking about football.
Mr. Odom, do you expect Mr. Bridgeman or anyone else from Segal might be here Thursday evening?
I do not know. Ms. George, did they say, we could ask him to come?
I can call him.
We'll do that if you'd like.
I just think, you know, we had a circumstance, maybe about a month ago, where there was a naming, and I have to assume that there's probably a, some type of event or ceremony or some type of declaration at the school when that occurred and everything, but it seems appropriate that, you know, if it is a passionate request, that someone might come and represent that request, takes away a little bit of the formality of it.
Any other discussion on that one? D.
E is a train renewal services update, and this is an information. In June of this year, a plan was approved to use train renewal services to re-warranty several aging chiller compressor systems for a period of five years. Wilson Elementary was on that list and scheduled for next year. Since the compressor failure this year at Wilson, the engineering and construction department has moved inclusion of that system ahead to this year to cost of $50,535.50. That was through existing contract on that renewal.
Discussion on that title? Okay, eleven.
Financial matters, school activity funds, accounts receivable and payable. Each year, the school board must approve the accounts receivable and payable for all of the school activity funds as of June 30. This year's school activity fund accounts payable totals $35,224.78, and the accounts receivable totals $1,223.53. These are routine items that were not ready to be settled by checks as of June 30, 2012. For example, the Blackman High payable to Jostens was being held because the school was waiting on a credit from Jostens that needed to be applied before paying the bill. The recommend, the motion is to approve $35,224.78 in school activity fund accounts payable and $1,223.53 in school activity fund amounts receivable as presented.
Discussion. B.
Capital projects fund budget amendment. In the capital projects fund, all open purchase orders are liquidated at the end of the fiscal year. Each year, an amendment is needed to rebudget those closed-out purchase orders from account 34685, committed for capital projects. This year's amendment is for $55,196, which will complete plumbing and other assorted work for home opittered campus school renovation Phase Two. The motion is to amend $55,196 from account 34685, committed for capital projects to 91300-335, maintenance and repair service buildings as presented.
Discussion. Okay, twelve.
Twelve is the proposed calendars for 2013-14 academic, and that's on tab five. If you approve this basic calendar, then the instruction department will come in and will put the PLC days and that sort of thing. This is typically what we do initially with the skeleton calendar, which is the days out of school, showing beginning dates, ending dates, that sort of thing.
Okay, discussion. Yeah, I don't think any of us figured out how to get to our tabs on the new system.
I just figured it out.
You did?
Tell me. No.
No, it's, it's the one at the very top, but two pages.
Okay.
They updated the computers this year.
Yeah, it's a new and improved version.
That's the issue.
My feedback from the public is that they're pretty happy with the calendars. They're not wild about the half-days, but we think we have a pretty good reason.
Would you like for us to print you one or something, Amy, or do you want to flash it up on the screen? Would you want to do that?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be good, if you could put it up on the big screen.
You can probably do that.
Oh, yeah, we need to put her on the spot.
It is page 58.
Okay.
So you can do that.
Scroll down.
Scroll down to page 58.
Or you just type 58 there.
It's the very last page.
Yep.
Okay, that makes it easy. There it is. Okay. Yeah, I think we're good, Amy, it's the last page, so we can all find that. Any discussion on the calendars? We just hope that the state allows us to continue setting the calendar. Every year, there are bills to tell us when we have to start and stop.
I did get a phone call about the half-days, and you mentioned that that's the one thing that the general public most often calls an exception to. Again, it's the in-service training, and the value of that is absolutely evident in the exemplary performance of our system. Are there any alternatives, though? I mean, would it be possible for those half-days to be scheduled on Mondays or Fridays? Would that be a benefit or not?
I can tell you from experience, we did try Friday, and we didn't have people for half-days. It was, students took off.
Turned into a long weekend.
We actually, it didn't, and it was really, it was changed because of that. I just honestly, that was it, and Monday too.
And Mondays, Fridays are the highest absentee as of date.
If you have an event like this, where it's a half a day, we'll come that day. But typically, Monday is usually your highest day, is my experience in attendance.
Okay, so limitations of human nature.
I've had that same question, and I think every year, a parent will call and say, well, why can't we do this on Friday? And there's a pretty good answer, well, we can't do it. Okay. Get back to that one. Thirteen.
Thirteen is also for information only, it's the executive committee approval. The executive committee approved on August 16, 2012, the emergency purchase of one compressor for Laverne Middle School. The bid was awarded to McQuay with a bid of $29,349 to be funded from the maintenance department funds. And that's been completed, I'm sure I was down there the day they were replacing it.
Discussion on that? General discussion. Erin?
I'm doing my best to represent the school board in the special committee from County Commission on road board and school board zones. If possible, I'd like to maybe get with Amy and get one of the maps that seems to be a leading contender, and even add that to our agenda tomorrow evening so the school board could look at that and officially comment on that if any board member would so desire. I would certainly appreciate your feedback, and because of sunshine law, it's incumbent upon me to get that feedback in this setting. I'd also like that feedback particularly from those members who are wrapping up their service on the school board, and so if we could add that item to the agenda, and I'll get with Amy and coordinate the technology of being able to show that. In matter of discussions there, one of the things, because, you know, you can think about your comments for tomorrow night, but I'll share with you some thoughts that I have, because I don't know that I'll say all of this tomorrow, but in a workshop-type of setting, it seems like a compact and contiguous zone is truly the goal of that special committee. And what may be in question is how, when, and under what circumstances those zones would be rolled out into effectiveness. There's already in place a concession for a road board member that will be elected for a six-year term because of some things that happened in the redistricting back in December, and so that's already in place. What may continue to result from this may be extended terms, or abbreviated terms, or somehow fully disclosed out into the future, term changes that may be, happen between now and 2022, which is when the next census would come into play. Personally, I have floated the idea in casual conversations, just with acquaintances, maybe it's appropriate that we would make a recommendation effective 2022, and inasmuch, the contiguous and compact nature of those districts would be the first thing, or I'm sorry, the contiguous compactness of those zones would be the first thing that the redistricting committee of 2022 would be addressing, as opposed to what apparently took place as one of the last things that they considered in, back in November and December. So, anyway, all that being said, well, maybe if it'd be okay with the chairman, we'll put some maps on the board tomorrow night, and you can share any feedback, some of you completely unencumbered by any consequences of your statements, so.
Wow. So, does Laverne have one zone in this, the leading contender?
In the leading contender, no, it would not result, and Laverne is stretched over actually four county commission districts, and it would be plausible to get about 90% of Laverne into, into one school board zone if three of those county commission districts were together. The limitation is, I happen to live in the fourth. And so, be that as it may, they may choose to ignore that and put the three together. Right now, they have taken and put two of them with a zone in Smur. All of that, nothing has even come to a motion at this point. There's just, you know, some maps that have been seen, and there's one map in particular that seems to be rising to the top, and I'm comfortable sharing it with the school board as what I consider to be the leading contender. It will have, it will have an impact on sitting school board members. One of the things that we've noticed is, as we go into September 1st, there are a lot of people over in what we would refer to as the Oakland area, there's a concentration of school board members over there, and the loss of Mr. Jernigan and where his residence is, is leaving kind of an open area down in that southwestern quadrant of the county. That doesn't have any direct impact, because, you know, we're going to represent the interest of the complete county and all that, but, you know, it does make the mapping thing particularly challenging.
Tim?
Would it be possible to get those match emails so we can have a chance to look at them before we come?
Yeah, I'll make sure.
You have an idea?
And they are, they are up on the Rutherford County, county website, but I'll, I'll send at least a link. If I'm requested to do that, I can do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Please send a link.
All right.
Right, yeah, no, thank you, Erin, for that report, and we'll, we're interested to see what they're coming up with. Other discussion? Don, you had a handout.
Just, you have a handout of our enrollment. $39,920, which you can see is $1,312 more than we had to close of last year. Reminds you, this does not include the governor's preschool numbers, because that funding is separate and different, so you have over 40,000 students enrolled in the district if you count those preschool numbers. I'm not, because of that 10-day phase-in and all, I'm not really comfortable saying exactly what that governor's preschool, what that number is definitively yet.
Is there usually some difference after September, after Labor Day? Is that, is that-
You'll see a slight difference. Most people, with the communication that's put out by Rutherford County and other school systems in the middle of the state, you won't see as many as we're used to in years past.
The seventh month seems to be the most reliable number.
They use, is it third, fifth, and seventh in the correct order?
They wait second, third, sixth, and seventh.
Okay. And there's a percentage attached with each of those.
Fifteen, twenty-five, thirty-five, and thirty-five.
Okay.
Our high schools are full.
High schools, that was my surprise this year, that the high schools had grown so much this year. That's unusual. Typically, we could see that coming from our eighth grade enrollment, we just did not see that coming.
Have you got any really trouble spots, remember, that would be solid, or spaced, something like part of having to get the portable around?
At this time, it doesn't look like we will have to purchase additional portables. We have had to redo some staffing. We've moved a few teachers, and we have also added some teachers. We're so close to capacity that when you have a 1 to 20 ratio, we may run 19.7 or 19.8 in a school. It's not when 20 more children come, it's sometimes when three or five come, and all of a sudden, then you're over that ratio, so we don't have reserve capacity, is what I'm trying to say typically. So we have had to add several teaching positions to comply.
Well, thank you for this information. It's adding 1,300 or so. So, Brandon.
Last year, a little over 500. This, this may be, I'd have to get the fact book out again, James, but 2006, '07, I believe, is when we had the 1,800 students, and this, this is getting very close to the number, maybe the next closest to that, which really surprised me. Last year would have been our smallest number, I believe it was 519, or something like that. And so, I thought the trending was down, but all of a sudden, we're back on the high side of our eight to 10-year trend, you know, so that's-
There's, there's good employment news coming out of Rutherford County. There's good employment news coming out of Rutherford County with Amazon and Nissan expansion. There are, there's some jobs here.
Buses are full. I talked with Mike about that, that's, he thinks he can make it right now, but that's, you know, when you get this many students, and virtually, I think he's told me roughly half of them will ride a bus when you have it, so.
Aaron.
Just so I understand, what's the difference between kindergarten readiness and all preschool?
The kindergarten readiness program are really the students who are going to take an extra year in kindergarten. Your preschool can be your four-year-olds. And we actually have more than one type. You have the governor's preschool, and then we're also required by federal law for special education, which are really three-year-olds, threes, fours, you know, also when you're, have I U P, and are also served by Rutherford County Schools. And that, through that census found, that your special ed department's required to conduct each year, so those numbers are obviously not in there either, and they come through special ed.
We have three-year-olds, I didn't realize that.
With certain language issues and auditory hearing, we're required to serve, and typically they do not come to school and stay at school, but their parents may bring them in for those services, you know, a certain number of days per week. But we have, we have quite a few three-year-olds with the county that are served.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. Other discussion? So we'll see you tomorrow night at five o'clock, we're adjourned.